Custom very for us to have an implication in this meeting before we officially start our meetings, we will stand and bow in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you at the end for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for this opportunity to be in the Swissburg area. We pray for the leadership and the citizens of the Swissburg area. We pray for their safety, their well-being, and their happiness and enjoyment of life. Lord, watch over the town of Swissburg, direct them and guide them, give us direction this evening. All that we do is say, please let me hear it in your prayer.
My allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and officially call our meeting, joint meeting here with the town of Swissburg this evening, call it to work. And one thing I'd like to say that I kind of overlooked earlier this morning because there was quite a few things the past week or two that's taking place. I had the pleasure last week of being invited to participate in Teacher of the Year for Washington County School System. I sat with the elected to the school board table and I'd like to recognize and congratulate Raymond Weber was chosen as the Teacher of the Year. There was a lot of honorary that was in doing with that, a lot of responsibilities, traveling around the state. And his class was given a $5,000 check for instructional materials and things that are needed in his classroom. So there was five nominees out of a whole list of candidates and Raymond Weber was chosen out of the five finalists. So it was a very nice evening, playing the ceremony and had a good time and thank our school board for making a difference in that pretty much every year. So with that, I would ask Commissioner Klein to go ahead and...
Scoutmaster Joe, would you upstate up introduce yourself into troop?
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Joe Eisenman. I'm the scoutmaster for troop two. We meet in Autobahn United Methodist Church in Acrestown. We're here this evening as part of the Citizenship and Community Merit Badge. So we're here to listen in on what you all have to discuss and take some notes and then perhaps we could discuss with you mayor afterward, just differences of opinion if they exist and kind of go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. It's always good to be in Swissburg. I haven't been here for a while and especially to see the mayor. Good to have you.
I reminded you of that guy.
Yeah. Well, thank the mayor and his council and welcome the scouts. You know, I was sort of joking, I said, "Here doing their..." But they are here doing the merit badge. That's pretty good. I like it. And I want my staff too. We got a lot of staff here tonight, so if anybody has any questions, I think they're smarter than I am, they can answer them. But I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you for inviting us here this evening to Swissburg Mayor Council, Town Manager. It's good to see the Boy Scout here. I was a Boy Scout, troop fifteen in Hancock. And when I saw all you young fellows in uniform, it reminded me of when I got to go to camp saying, "Aquity, is that a place you get to go?" You know, I really enjoyed those days. So I'm sure you fellas do too and look forward to talking with them. Thanks for your interest, the local government. Thanks for coming here.
Okay. Your mic off. Are these working?
Yeah.
Okay, good. It's a pleasure to be here in Swissburg. It's my hometown area. I live just outside of town, closer to Ringo. You know, I've attended a number of these meetings and my daughter was in here, eleven years old, giving a presentation about some of her concerns about the park. You know, one thing that I know is there's a tremendous amount of engagement here by the local community and our citizens and the responsiveness of the town's leaders. The elected officials as council members, but the mayor too. A lot of activity here, just like there is in other places. I know there are challenges here that you're dealing with, whether it's the water street renovation, water and sewage challenges. You've got a major development, Cloverly Development, and there are probably some challenges there. I'd love to hear more about that if we could tonight. One of the things, the county started out with an experiment, a trial project here is going to be looking at Swissburg EMS, okay? And, you know, we're working through those details to improve public safety in that aspect. And I'd just like to say one other thing here, and that is, you know, it won't be too long, we'll be coming up on a year anniversary of the Columbia Machine Shop shooting where we've had a loss of life. And that was tragic. And, you know, the year before, I think we had the murder-suicide by Misty Meadows, Greenery, where some children were also killed. And I'd just like to do a shout out to our emergency services, Swissburg Police, done a tremendous job, got good leadership, good training here in this area, and the cooperation and collaboration that goes on with the fire department, the volunteer fire department here with a lot of good contributors, that works real well with Leidersburg and the other areas. And I just commend the spirit, okay, and the work ethic of the people that are making our community here in the Swissburg area a better place. Thank you to the council members and to the mayor for that.
I'm not an elected official, but I'll go ahead and make a few comments. I do want to thank the mayor and all the town council members for allowing us to use your building and have a joint meeting with you this evening. Yeah, it was nice to be able to go home and then be down here in about three minutes. So obviously, if you don't know, I live in Swissburg, I own Whispering Hills, so it's always nice to be here and be able to have an opportunity to talk to you. Welcome all of you. Hopefully you'll get a good experience just listening to the elected officials and staff talk about what's going on in the county and the town of Swissburg. Also, I do want to thank our senior staff who came this evening to try to answer any questions, I know there's some in particular, but they came to, if you have any other questions, to do that. So again, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Obviously, I love Swissburg because that's where I live, so... And of course, I can't forget, I want to thank, I guess he's not so new anymore, but the town manager. We go back a long way, so it's good to see you and congratulating him, although I know he's not really new to all of you, but I haven't had a chance to see him. So congratulations. It's nice to be here.
He's a Steeler fan.
Oh yeah, I forgot to mention that. I'm a Steelers fan, so...
In Ravens territory.
Yeah, we sit next to each other, but you know...
We get along. One thing I did want to say, thanks to the mayor and town privates and thanks for the scouts and to our staff. This Saturday, Hospice of Washington County is doing a radio con and Commissioner Kiefer and Wagner and I are on the 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM call-in time. So Hospice is donating all proceeds this year to Dewey's House. My mom and dad were benefits of those two operations and someday sooner or later you may be with the family. So if you're not doing anything between noon and one, look us up on Facebook and you'll find a number to call to make a donation. It's a worthy cause. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Okay, mayor, it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you very much, commissioners, staff of Washington County. We want to welcome you and thank you, as well as our guests that are in the audience and scout troop. It will be my absolute pleasure to spend time with you after the evening and kind of do a Q and A and answer your questions in kind of our local town. At the same time, I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce the council members that are actually in attendance. And I'm sure some of them will speak here momentarily when we get to certain subject matters that I know that they've advocated for, they work hard with, and there's a lot of other problems in this room, so I'm sure they'll be eager to address those concerns. But first, I'd like to introduce our vice president of council, Tracy Knights-Samming. And then we have in the back row hiding, I guess, a little bit, Councilman Roberto Gonzalez. Next to him is Councilman David Dan. And then next to David is the chair of our Parks Commission. She's, Jeanette Dan, is not an elected official, but she's done a lot here lately, working with her commission, our commission, and the mayor and council. Andrew, I know we've kept you up a lot of nights, not before, with some of these grants over the last few years, but really do appreciate the work that you're doing with our Parks Commission, the mayor and council to improve our community. And Commissioner Harvey is correct, his daughter was in here a few weeks ago, highlighted some things that public works here in town needed to address the parks, as well as some conceptual designs the Parks Commission is doing with others for some of our equipment in the park. Greatly, as I can, on behalf of our town manager, Brian Brant, who will speak here momentarily, say that we address some of those concerns, Commissioner Harvey, and we continue to make sure that our parks here in Swissburg are a draw and we get compliments all the time on our parks. And we couldn't really do it...
...for the community as a staff.
Without your support, both financially and then with the effort and time the staff puts in to make everything better, we are absolutely making Swissburg, if it isn't already the best community in Washington County, it's pretty darn close. So we thank you for your attendance here tonight. We look forward to answering any questions you may have. And then again, I'm going to turn it over to Brian so he can introduce himself and most of you know him as we pluck him from the city, but he wasn't a current employee for years. So I'm going to take a moment to let him introduce himself. Again, thank you guys very much.
Well, for those of you that's noticed for a long, long time, you know, I'll make it clear. But it does matter, so thank you all. We appreciate that. We appreciate the continued help that you all have given us, the dedication, right of the staff, the management. We really appreciate it. Especially for ourselves. That's huge. Thank you. I'm Brian Brant. There's some projects coming up. We've been using a target with your upgrades with the wastewater treatment plan. We're in the process right now of getting final points on our mineral mining as well as our meat mining. So that should completely be reduced, completely, all of that can be reduced in preparation. But we're still on the way to the end of the waste. So that'd be a nice, cool project for Swissburg and the county on those things, to go and work out with the community. And once again, guys, thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mayor, council members?
Yeah, if there's any council member that would like to come up and speak, introduce yourself.
Come on up, please.
You've got three minutes.
That's the hot seat for sure.
He was one of the most engaged residents that we had for years, so he knows very much of the...
Right, so he knows that seat too.
Yeah, and I think it's been about five years since I was in charge of the administration of Swissburg. So I probably notice a lot has changed. Building looks very different. Here we have a lot of changes and I hope the environment is a lot more welcoming. I know that needed, the hot topic was sewer, the sewer upgrades and the steps that the county was going to take to upgrade our state. I don't believe anything has happened since then, but from what I understand, there are steps, the irrigation steps now, so we're working on that. So hopefully tonight we'll hear about those plans. And I do want to also thank the administration as well, the Parks Department, Parks Swissburg, they've been, we have a lot of brands, a lot of stuff, plus everything that we have to make in place now. And again, just obviously, since you guys have through a lot of that bucket, we're going to have done without it, so I appreciate the partnership and that, that's the thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, Roberto.
I can't take you anywhere. I was going to say, I'm just glad that wasn't me.
We'll refund it.
I don't have a show. We don't have any money to refund that right now.
I'm Tracy Knights-Samming and I'm the vice president of the Swissburg Town Council. Thank you so much for being here. Before I left the house, my daughter is a Washington County teacher and she said to me, "Mom, make sure that county commissioners are looking out for us." I was like, "Oh, I'll mention it." She is a teacher at E. Russell Hicks, sixth grade math. She is an advocate for teachers all through the county. And I know Swissburg has great schools and I know Washington County has great schools. The teachers that are great, the kids are great, but she wanted me to help that. We will hear about what you're doing for the teachers in Washington County.
Thank you.
Councilman Gonzalez?
I'll be quick, short and sweet. I'm Roberto Gonzalez. I can't thank you all enough for the parks and the grant load that we've received. It's been a long time. We've had a lot of them floating around and like Dave said, we now have the people in place and we have everything rolling along. I know our parks, people worked so hard to get everything together, so it's very much appreciated and it's going to make a big difference for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask short and sweet. Commissioner Harvey, answer a couple of your questions to go back and circle back if I may. The Cloverly Development continues to be probably our largest impetus of growth here in Swissburg. They have met some challenges and are continuing to work through soil conservation, MBE on some of those challenges. Unfortunately, the developer is in a heart condition that he had to have addressed or med...
Say medical condition.
Let me rephrase that, a medical condition. So he could be here in attendance this evening, but he's still planning to plug away and get the Cloverly Development designed and built here in Swissburg. With that being said, Swissburg is on the cusp of potential new development. If you've come in off of, you know, sixty-four and seventy-seven, you've seen the old Oswald Nursery, it's pretty much now over there, sold in New York, there has some potential plans for that. So we welcome to see whatever design or concept he may have for that parcel. And then we have some other interests just on the outskirts of town, looking to potentially annex in later on. Our planning portion has been extremely busy, trying to meet those challenges. So that's why I ties it a little bit to, I guess, when I contacted John just to kind of maybe get an update of where we are on the wastewater treatment plan because as Councilman Dan noted in his statement, five years ago, we were in a different place than we were in 2023 and of course COVID didn't help with a lot of that. So, I mean, it is something that we have to look at and address because it will potentially hamper our ability to develop long-term. But Swissburg is thriving and it looks like it's a place that people that want to come to Washington County want to live and want to do, provide the proper service that we need. John, you got an update on that?
Yeah, first, can I, something I probably should have done is, just so you know who all's here, just to help you with questions. If staff could introduce themselves, because I know you know Andrew and Mark and a couple other people, but you may not know some of the other ones. So then you'll know who's here, so you can put a name to a face. I apologize, I should have done that at the beginning, but Michelle, I'll go ahead and start with you.
So where do you find your office?
I'm the director of revenue management. We talk a lot of work with...
I'm the director of engineering. Dr. Ashelman, director of public works.
Phil Baker, director of planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you. I apologize that I didn't do that at the beginning so you can all know who was there. So I just heard Dave, I remember that meeting very well. I was there, that was downstairs and it was very crowded and I remember that meeting. So we have come a long way since then. I think we have some good news to share. So I've asked Mark to come. So Mark, if you could give us an update and the status of where we're going and the timing of that.
What do you use this place?
Oh, and Danielle Weaver back there and she's running the streaming back there, so...
He leaves a microphone, be careful.
That's only the Jeff Klein person on the phone. Treatment plan. We actually received the final approval needed from MBE last month. We now have all the funding in place and the idea is we will upgrade the plant to point four-five MDD against currently point-three-three MDD and...
Millions of gallons per day?
Yes, sorry.
So that's in plain English for our audience?
Four hundred fifty thousand gallons a day and you're currently at three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons per day. So we're increasing the capacity...
How many additional EDUs were that? How many additional EDUs were that?
Want to help you here?
Did you tell me?
EDU.
Oh, I think, for all of us, how many more EDUs we're going to, that's what we need to know.
Yeah, that's the question, right? How many EDUs?
So, I think you sent that to us. You didn't...
Now you have some Paul music? Five hundred eighty-five.
Five hundred eighty-five additional EDUs, right?
So about half of that will be used by Clover Lee.
No, I mean, there's some still in the bank. Yeah, so... Yeah, we have a hundred and six in the bank right now that's available for any in-field development or something until we get the MDD upgrade.
So close to seven hundred EDUs. For six-ninety...
For the Skies here, would you explain what EDU is?
EDU is based on how much water you use in your house. We consider what are you using, the standard equipment going to use, basically one house, one average you use two hundred gallons a day of water. If you're got a lot of older sisters, probably then that they love showers. So if you have a lot of teenage girls in your house, that number might be slightly higher. If you don't have teenage girls, your numbers usually slightly lower.
Inappropriate, inappropriate.
I think that sounds like a personal experience that Mark said. I think he's just relaying his personal experience.
You have three daughters.
He has three, he has three daughters.
These Boy Scouts have been tamed for...
If you're on average, each house uses two hundred gallons a day. So when we talk about Cloverly Development, let's say it's two hundred fifty houses, they're going to use fifty thousand gallons per day. If you use fifty thousand gallons a day, you generate fifty thousand gallons too. You know what comes in, gives out. Whether it's washing dishes, laundry, showers, so better EDU, two hundred gallons a day, so each house uses that, that's what we do on that. So we are hoping to have everything to the purchasing office within the next month and then they will put it in their queue. Right now, I think the queue is about three weeks out and then we will advertise it. Complexity of this job, you're probably looking at a forty-five, sixty-day advertising period. And then upon receiving the bids and everything looks good, we will then go to work for more. You're probably looking at roughly three, four months out before we can actually work the project. But locally, within the next month, two months, we will have the advertising.
Is that a lengthy project, once the work starts? Does it all take four months, six months?
It probably will take eighteen months. Right now, we are having extreme delays with electrical equipment. Electrical equipment, we're doing a pump station right now and we ordered the, it's called the motor control center, it's basically the, basically electrical panels. We ordered in February of twenty-two and they come in in March of twenty-three. You're looking at thirteen months out just to get the main electrical gear in. That's probably why it's going to have to be an eighteen-month project because the actual electrical gear, it's still working good. So you're looking at an eighteen-month project just due to the Cloverly times. It don't appear to be getting any better, particularly on the electrical side. Since we could have it on schedules, the simplest thing, trying to afford some boughs for another project, they're thirty-six weeks out just for the boughs and for the pipes. So just things of getting your materials is what pushes it to be an eighteen-month project. Fortunately, there's nothing I can do about that.
And I think with the timing, obviously, we have to look at specific, but with the timing of the projects and the EDUs you still have in the bank, I think, I think it'll work out okay timing-wise even with that, I think, with the way that's going to work.
They do their I and I project, that will free up some of the...
Free up some of those...
Because Brian will touch on...
I was going to say, I'd like to hear about that.
Because it is a partnership of the line running through and where our responsibilities are and then you guys get the final product. So Brian will touch on some of the initiatives by the mayor and council here to improve our system.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, because I'd like to hear about that project.
Yeah, we just, last week, our P R grant finally came in for water and wastewater. So we've been at our parades in years. That's going to be starting here very shortly as well. What we're looking at doing is complete replacement of all pump stations. They are well-kept, they're life-standing, time-to-replace them. Should notice a little bit of difference, not a whole lot, but in your waste stream. We've installed our first muck and monster. What that is, that is a masserator that sits in the flow channel and spins and it'll do everything that comes down from rags, trash trees. It's working very well, so that should help clean up some of the stuff you're seeing down at the wastewater plant. By the time we're done, all three wastewater stations will have the massorators in them. Basically, what we're looking at doing, we're going to go ahead, as I said, we're going to get started on the lining, manual replacement ourselves, but with the P R going out, we're looking at grant funding as well. We're looking at basically a complete redo of our entire flex system as well as the distribution system. It's very, very long.
So could I ask a question about, what did you call that?
That is a muck and monster.
Okay, so I guess that replaces, I had a job in high school where I had to go into the sewer pit and we had this rake that just circled around and then these filters, and someone had to go in and get all that stuff that was collecting, that physical stuff.
Yes, I'll tell you the full story.
Please do.
After I was still at the county about twenty-five years ago, I got called up here to assist, had to break my truck up. And I left when I got here and helped clean out the well because there was a milk carton that was suspended by a rope right underneath the flow channel. And the guys that were there at the time, they would pull it up every day, every other day, get the rags out, dump them in the basket and then I'd put baskets fully to haul it away. Well, lo and behold, I started and I... Would you believe the same milk carton, still, well, new rope because I'm sure the old rope is broken a couple times, but yes, that's exactly what you're talking about. So the guys are, it's only been a couple weeks, but I'm very, very thankful to not have to do that job anymore.
So for the Boy Scouts that are here, just one second. For the Boy Scout, but Dave, for the Boy Scouts that are here, you learn a lot by doing different kinds of jobs and you develop grit and persistence and discipline by doing sometimes nasty jobs. Now, there's a TV show about all those dirty jobs, but you can learn a lot and you also can learn what you don't want to be doing when you grow up. So it motivates you to maybe get a better education and so just think about that, guys.
And on the flip side, as part of PSA, Public Services, careful what you throw into the system. We found mop heads and rags and towels, but disposable waste are not disposable waste. They don't break down in the environment. So you'd be amazed at some of the stuff that when you go and look at, whether you toured the Washington County facility right down here in the group or whether it's our own, you'd be amazed at some of the stuff people cram into a toilet. And, you know, it's got to go somewhere. So as Brian said, we're working on making sure that the product is cleaner as it comes through our system. Anyone that's interested, I already have a staff. So you guys are all working on this, so again, notice this.
Have you worked with the county on the water leak issue on your, do you have a leakage issue? Have you resolved that? If you're with your water?
Water side, it's actually a city大事.
It is, okay.
Yes, this is county sewer.
So have you guys resolved any of that loss, identifying where it's at?
We're working on that. It's more difficult with the water loss to find that because if it's sewer, you can set the camera up, sewer line, hell of a bad, you can see everything you need to see. Water system is a little bit different. I mean, in all honesty, I'd like to paint a better picture, but water system needs to be redo. Everything is in bad shape. And I know Mark, Mark's backing you on this because I know we had it at the county as well. As it gets older, can you fix one break? That piece of pipe now, you can take pressure, so it pushes it right downstream to the next one. What we're doing as we fix them, we're to blow down that section. We need to come in and we need to do a complete redo and we'll eliminate that problem as well. So, I mean, where we're at right now, we're actually in a very good place that we're headed. Everything's on... So, I mean, where we're at right now, we're actually in a very good place, we're headed, um, everything's on the table, everything's ahead of us, and you have a plan for both. By the time this is done, everybody, everybody should be very happy, city, county, and town.
Thank you, thanks, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I can add one more question, is, are there any plans for holiday?
Yeah, we have to, all right. Commissioner Harvey will also update you and the county commissioner on the water stream project, I think that's also on your list of, um, questions. Um, as you know, Governor Hogan's administration, before he left, had done a one million dollar, we did receive a million dollars in the last year's fiscal year, we were on the authorized list for three more million. The administration took office in January, um, that three million is no longer a priority in government wars, budget, so that three million is no longer there. Um, however, Brian, myself, along with the council and our staff, have started to shift gears, where we were looking for other funding sources, whether it be M D E or through, uh, federal with Senator Carden, Senator Van Hollen, or Congressman Trump's office, uh, as part of maybe some of the clean water initiative, to seek funding from that pot of money, where we thought that that was gonna be supplemental to the shortage that we would probably see here, we had to shift that focus to where that will be the primary, at least in the short-term funding source. Um, we did have to engineer R K and K in at our last council meeting to kind of give an update to the council, uh, we are gonna continue to move forward with getting input from what.
Council, our economic commission, as well as the public, um, so that we have some sort of plan in place, so that when we go to, um, present or sell this project to those funding sources, we can actually show them something of what the finished product, conceptually, design-wise, would look like. Uh, so we've had to change gears, but we haven't stopped, we're gonna continue to, uh, look at those funding sources. Not setting aside the, the transferring of water street to the state highway administration, it's more about going back to what Brian said, uh, is the focus of the initiative on fixing a lot of the infrastructure that has not been, um, maintained or fixed in a very long time.
It has to be synchronized, right, you don't do the water mains and things without.
But luckily, um, our luck holds out with suicide, what we found from having the lines here from the car wash down Bradbury Avenue, they're all terracotta pipe, and it was absolutely amazing what we saw, they're still in pretty decent shape. However, when we come in and you start to use the vibrating machines to the asphalt, we will destroy everything that's in the ground, so, yes, um, we have to go ahead and line them. Once they're lined, that terracotta can break away on the outside of it and, and along the other end. So yes, there is, there is a procedure, that's why if we're trying to get on this and get ahead of it, and get the utilities.
So it's an insert that goes in, runs up through the terracotta pipes?
Yeah, runs in, you get from manhole to manhole, um, if you've never seen it, when we start doing it, anybody understood it, it is pretty cool. And you can also run them off the service levels, and they seal them off, it's called a top hat, it looks like Abraham Lincoln's hat. You put it in, and it seals everything tight, they cut out the service connection, and everything's piped up, so between that and the manholes, oh, we should be setting really, really.
Cool, cool.
Did we hit everything on your list, Commissioner?
I think, yeah.
Had a few there that, uh, updated. And if not, you know where to reach us.
Relating to the water stream project, I know we heard today that the, um, a grant you had submitted to the A R C, Athelion Regional Commission, it didn't qualify. Um, do you think you might have an opportunity next year when funding starts over again, is there a way you could resubmit that grant, maybe apply for a different part of that project?
As, as Councilman Dan alluded to when he was here earlier, um, our grant writer with M R D C, um, has been exceptionally well with, um, for many years, we focused here in the town primarily on P O S and pretty far some playground grants. Um, I think, you know, we're in a whole different era of the way we think now, uh, where we are going after any and all available dollars that we can get, so I'm sure that we will adjust, um, and if we don't qualify again, we will look for a different funding source. Um, we did receive a hundred thousand from the Tri-County Council to put towards the beers and the T I S, which we're going to, um, you know, if you think that, uh, if Brian was talking about the crate, um, that's in our, um, waste water system, you should see some of our maps that were color-coded from previous, previous, previous mayor. Uh, that, that's still hanging in the, the office. So, to answer your question, yes, we will, we will tinker with that grant application, we will continue to do that opportunity, as well as any other funding source we have. Um, I do know that R K and K, along with Mr. Dave Howler, who is the, uh, best project manager, has submitted a request into Senator Carden Van Hollen's office. Uh, we did get an email back that we are on their potential list to put in for the request, five million from Senator Carden's office and four million from Senator Van Hollen, so if that would go through as part of the appropriations, that would pay for about three percent of that project. Um, and then, of course, we still have some article plans available in, you know, the community, so, but to answer your question, yes, we will continue to track down as much funding as possible, um, as we possibly can. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, was that your first?
No, 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 I'm just saying, for the public, yeah, to be aware, yeah, we got the notification later today, yeah, late today, so.
There it is.
Just an update on, there's a lot of construction going on, I know it's not your partners.
At the school.
At the school, but, you know, it does affect the community, and we see all the work that's going on.
Um, it's affected our community as well, we had a late night run-in with a backhoe, uh, but, uh, it's going well, from my understanding and talking to, um, school officials wherever they're, they seem to be on their, their scheduled task of getting it completed. Um, the great thing will be, can, will be, just like South High was, incredible, down there, and of course, when North High State was done, um, it would be a nice addition to this quadrant of the county, uh, which should also help with that economic development of being able to bring in a lot more outside tourism and spectator participation. Uh, so business owners like our downtown, business owners here, um, are eagerly waiting for that project to be done, but my understanding is they are still on task, uh, it should be completed under the original schedule that they had, um, and then hopefully, um, we'll see you all back when we do the dedication.
Good. Okay.
I don't know, is anyone from the public?
Assistance participation?
Council? This is, this is probably, this has gotta be much better than twenty nineteen.
Absolutely, but I, at, at the risk of extending this for just a little longer, I do, it was mentioned earlier about Smithburg EMS, um, so I, I think everybody's probably aware, but obviously, the commissioners have been talking about it for some time, we've realized there's, there's an issue with EMS in the county, and, so the commissioners have directed staff to, to, to begin, we've already had some discussions, but to begin the process of hiring the employees from Smithburg EMS and Williamsport EMS as county employees. So, that'll work through, that's gonna be a process, that's gonna take, uh, it's gonna take a few months to work through all that, but what I wanted to say was that, Smithburg EMS, the entity, will, will continue to operate, they will own the facility, they will own the equipment, so you'll still see them fundraising, so I would say to the residents of Smithburg, they're still gonna be fundraising, raising funds for the facility and for the equipment, the county will be providing the employees, so the county will pay the employees and provide all the benefits to that. And, but the, but the facility will still be there, so I just wanted to, to, to mention to the public that, even though those employees will be county employees, there still will be a need to donate, and still need, and, and, and Smithburg EMS is committed to that, and I know this community is committed to that, but I just wanted to, to, to make sure that everybody understood that part of it.
And there'll still be some volunteer EMS?
There still will be some volunteers as well, so, um, so, yeah, so that's gonna be, and so those county employees will be working, uh, out of that facility, um, and it, but it, what it does, it gives us an opportunity to, to provide, you know, additional service here in Smithburg if needed, uh, or if another part of the county, you know, needs some assistance, uh, we'll be able to take, you know, use those employees there as well, so, um, it just gives us more flexibility than, than is in place right now, the county has realized that, you know, we have some EMS issues, uh, so we decided to start with these two companies and work forward, so, so I'm excited about the opportunity of, of the county being, the county's always been involved, but to actually have county employees staffing that station, but, uh, but the, the, the Smithburg community, I, I'm sure will continue to support the EMS station and the EMS, all the volunteers and the board there, uh, to continue to operate that way.
You had mentioned at the beginning of the comments that the Smithburg Mercy Services will continue to occupy its own building.
They, they will.
So that will not be turned over to the county as part of a county, okay?
It will not be, they'll, they'll.
Cause we have a partnership with a couple of different adventures that we do with them, so we just wanna make sure that.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have to change the channels of how that works.
No, their facility will be, is, it, the ownership is not gonna change, we will have a, a, an M O U with, uh, with Smithburg EMS, uh, to allow us to be able to put our employees into that, uh, and work out of that facility, but they'll continue to operate, they'll continue to own the facility and all the equipment, so that's why I'm saying, they're still gonna be raising funds, and so they're gonna be reaching out to the community to raise funds for, for that, so, but all that will remain the same, so partnerships you have with them, uh, to use their facility or anything else you have with them will remain in place.
So, one, one other county-funded element that is a jewel in this area is the Smithburg Library.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Smithburg Free Library, and it's basically co-laid, it co-located with Veterans Park, a lot of synergy there, and it's easily accessible to the schools, to public schools, but it, it's a treasure here, and, you know, it's part of our funding stream. Uh, we don't control the operations, but we do, you know, fund it, you know, any comments on what you see up there, or, you know?
No, we continue to have a great partnership and relationship with the library here, uh, again, um, Veterans Park is one of our epic centers for events, as you know, Commissioner, children, you've brought, you've brought a lot of our events, um, they've been a great partner with shared space, um, facility itself, so we would hope that that would continue, I know that, um, we just had a conversation with.
Library Board.
A week and a half, two weeks ago, uh, you know, helping them or assisting, uh, essentially the town, uh, helping them with trees and making some other trees, uh, so, you know, always looking, you know, keep cultivating, keep that, that relationship going, because you're absolutely right, sir, it is, it is one of the jewels of, um, uh, this, this, in the town, and frankly, we have some of the best public libraries, if not as a state or all the counties, you know? But no, we, we are very pleased to have our partnership with you as the elected body, and John and staff, um, you know, as, as we said earlier, I think everyone's hit it, um, between Mark and Andrew and the folks at his staff have been great with, um, helping us, um, transition. As I mentioned earlier, the town is, is not a sleepy little town anymore, that doesn't really seek to, to grow or seek to improve through grant applications or funding, or in partnership with the county, we are taking that next step, and you guys have absolutely been a huge help in that process, to yourselves and staff, so, again, I want to thank you on behalf of mayor, council, my staff, our town, um, what we do.
Yeah, I, I, I would just echo what you said about, I think, obviously, this board and the direction they provided to me and the staff is, is to, is to work very closely with municipalities, so we know how important you are, obviously, through the county, and so, uh, it goes without saying, and I know you already know this, but, you know, if you have issues that we can help you with, I mean, sometimes we can't, but some, but sometimes we can, even just to offer our expertise, uh, you know, we have, uh, you know, a lot of different areas, and so, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to us. And one other one I'll just mention, uh, is, uh, obviously, we have a great partnership between the Smithburg Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. Uh, I, you know, I know there's been some issues, and I think you're working through those, but I think that the Sheriff's Department, and I know your, your police chief are, are constantly in contact, providing the, the safety for the citizens of Smithburg, and I, I, I just wanna.
Our police department is like every police department, and Vice President Nice and Major probably would be, you know, the best one to speak on this, uh, considering, you know, the household and the family, but, um, it's a struggle, right?
Right.
Maryland has, has adopted some new laws, and it puts, you know, um, metaphorically, the handcuffs on the police officers, uh, it makes it tough to recruit, it makes it tough to retain them, um, but you're right, Chief Mark has done an absolutely fabulous job of doing the best that we can with, with the officers that we do have, and yes, the Washington County Sheriff's Department has been, uh, a great partner in policing and, and working with our officers and our community on keeping it safe, and, and we appreciate you acknowledging, uh, the work that our officers do as well as the other officers.
Yeah, and I, and I would agree, it, it is a struggle, I, I know that, uh, I will, I'll tell you that, obviously, in Washington County, I think the, the citizens of Washington County are very supportive of the police, uh, you know, every month we have, I meet with all the county administrators, and, 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 and to hear some of them talk about the issues that they have, that you hear nationwide, but I think in Washington County, uh, and in all our municipalities, you know, the citizens are very supportive of the police, and I, you know, I, I'm very thankful for that, but, uh, so I do, you know, uh, yeah, again, I just wanna acknowledge that relationship.
We'll see all of you nationally, is that what I heard, John?
Well, I think that, I think that they try, I think that they try to get to as many of them as they can.
Absolutely.
I know there's a, there's a number of those, and I, you know, I, I try to come out to the one in Smithburg, but, uh.
We're better, you know, we have our swimming pool fun round, but it'll be sometime in the fall, and those proceeds.
I saw pictures of you running, I saw pictures of you running that, I think I might attend, but I don't think I'll be running.
Well, I know, I was ahead of the chief.
Yeah, but he's working, I see him running out there, I know it's, I know it's gonna be, but, uh, but no, that, that, it is a good relationship, and for the citizens, uh, you know, obviously, you're working with your local police department, but, uh, the Sheriff's Department is there in partnership with them, uh, if there's any, if it's needed, so.
Thank you, um, unless somebody else is not taking the meeting, but, you know.
No, thank you, right ahead.
Yep, I think we're good, right?
Any, any other citizens or staff comments?
Anyone wants to say? Commissioners?
Action to adjourn.
Wrap up? We have a motion for a German, I haven't heard a second, but.
I'm enjoying this too much.
I did hear a second, so.
Did the scouts learn anything, did you pick up anything at all? Tell me what you picked up, someone raised their hand, tell me what you got out of this meeting.
They thought they made it all the way through without somebody calling on them, right?
Yeah, exactly. Way to go, Randy.
What does Prince Harry have to say, Prince Harry?
Prince Harry.
I know it's funny the way he turned, he knew who you were talking about.
Tell us one thing you learned, please. Could you please come up here and tell us one thing you learned, one thing?
Here, I'll, I'll, I'll throw you a lifeline, I will say this, because as our mayor and councilman, we have a lot of engagement from our local scouts, um, we just had a gentleman here, David Smith, who did the, uh, bags for all of the ambulances, uh, that deal with children that are battling their needs, or patients that, that are dealing with needs. Um, so as Commissioner Harvey said, um, as in every, every civic organization and volunteer organization, it is tough to get people to do things out of, of just their own routine, so for you to come in here and listen to us talk about, uh, certain topics, or Brian talking about sewer, or Mark talking about sewer, is to be commended, and, um, hopefully, one day, you know, you folks are sitting up here in our, your, your. Here, here. Uh, do, I, I do wanna say that, cause we do get a lot of volunteer support, a lot of help from our Boy Scouts.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Now, if somebody wants to follow up, I kinda do, you look like you're ready to go.
Does someone tell me what an EDU is, anything about an EDU, I saw somebody write, say, good Mark did his job, how many gallons per house is an EDU?
Yes.
Way to go, buddy, I'm done.
There you go. We better stop while we're ahead.
We got your first and a second on the floor.
I'm gonna pull a quick poll here, how many commissioners, current commissioners were Boy Scouts?
Yeah, there you have one. It doesn't surprise me, Jeff.
Yep.
I was an all-star base guy.
See, we should've just adjourned, we should've just adjourned.
We got a first and a second on the floor.
Well, if we could do one day, there's five of us.
Well, how many years, uh, for each Commissioner Reese, how many years you were a Boy Scout, one, two, three?
I made it through.
Why didn't he go to Eagle? Why didn't he go to Eagle?
It's too hard.
But.
Only five percent, only five percent make it now.
I know, we have five scouts, right? Five here, and there's five of us, so I think we should give each one, one of our pins. And if you're not allowed to wear this when you're official uniform, I don't know. But I think we should each give one, how's that?
That's good with me.
I think I have one, an extra one in my pocket.
If not, Jeff needs to put me on the back of the desk here.
Well, I used to leave my business card there, and I was searching for.
Prince Harry, come on up here. Prince Harry, come on up here. Now, you see why I call him Prince Harry, right?
All of you come up one at a time.
I was gonna say. Are we adjourned, Mr. President?
If you need to adjourn, if you got a first one.
Yeah, we have a first and a second.
I second.
All in favor of her.
Herman, it's right there.
Okay, come down this way.